Then let's open the May 24th meeting of the Town of Rutland Planning Board at 7:00. And, um... So we can let you go first. I think we'll take some things out of the water.
Actually, I take it back. We do need to have a decision on the Master Plan Steering Committee. We need three members for that, the A and R.
Right. But we don't need to do minutes tonight.
No.
So, let's postpone minutes till next meeting. So, that brings us right to the A and R on Prescott Street in East Lee Side.
Aaron's Way.
Aaron Way.
A little bit of history on this. This was a piece of land that, I guess, went up for auction a year ago or a few years ago the Town of Rutland had.
Yep.
And people bought it, and they sold it, and Jimmy Susi ended up buying it from them. And what he's doing is there were two separate parcels back from when this was a subdivision. And his attorney said it'd be best to show it as one, because it's the same ownership. It's just less confusing that there's one lot instead of two lots. So there's going to be room for one house, and that's it.
That's the original.
That's the old line. That was the old line. So that's going to be abandoned now, combined made into one. There's no more question on it. Well, there's two lots there. Can there be two houses? No. Only one.
Yeah.
And that's pretty much it.
So you got the frontage there?
And this is actually a public way.
Is it not there? It doesn't exist. It ends right here.
Yeah.
So I would just offer that in that case, because the frontage has not been developed. It's not actual frontage. So the frontage for the purposes of this matter is on Prescott Street.
It's on Prescott.
Which is the same frontage that existed in 1969.
Right.
So these were now non-conforming lots, and actually this still is.
Pre-existing, non-conforming lots. And it's still a pre-existing, non-conforming lot, but it's one piece instead of two individual bases.
So, as long as it was created, when it was created, it was conforming.
1960...
1969.
Yeah.
I have the original plans if you'd like to share them.
So it is still a build-up lot. That's correct, Dave?
Yeah.
Right. So as I... Let me just get my email. So regarding the A and R, the applicant seeks to build one house on combined...
It was never... It's not really there.
Right.
That never... We talked about it, and they talked about coming back or something like redoing it, but it never did.
Oh, yeah. They wanted to do some senior housing or something like that, yeah.
But in reality, that's not there.
I'm sorry. Dick, you were saying something?
Yeah, if you wanted to go on, otherwise you could hear all sound like... You asked me a question, and I thought this was another combined house. Just going to read from the email that I provided to the board earlier. So the applicant seeks to build one house on the combined lots. There's two lots currently. The lots were laid out as part of a subdivision created in 1969 called Sunny Hill Estates. At the time the lots were created, the block implied its zoning requirements then and after 1969. However, the dimensional requirements have since increased. However, the lots have not been built on ever, but from 1969 to the present, the lots have been vacant. The lots have been merged because of ownership. As a result, the merged lots retain vested rights with respect to the area and frontage requirements. The applicant has removed the internal lot line only. These lots are the lots sold by the town at auction a few years ago. So as a result, the lots maintain their vested rights. I mean, building a lot of one house on one combined lot.
All right.
Any questions?
I have no questions.
You know, I didn't bring my paperwork, but I did review that prior to the meeting.
Motion to endorse said plan.
Second?
Is there any discussion? Hearing none? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
I like these new plans, the small plans. Easier to pass around.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Come on. Yeah.
Maybe I don't like these ones.
Usually they're kind of curled up, and you can grab them. This one just wants to stick.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in.
I hope you have a much longer break.
Okay. Second thing, just real quick. We have a request from the developer on number three, the Geltop Public Hearing to continue to...
What's continuing?
6:28.
Yep.
6:45.
Do I have a motion?
I saw move.
And a second?
Second.
And discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I think the last thing of... Merit is all the way down to item eight, Master Plan Steering Committee.
Yep.
So...
Yeah. So currently, there is a seven-member committee called the Master Plan Steering Committee. This is the group that is doing the heavy lift on the master plan in terms of reviewing the chapters, offering input for goals and objectives, and so forth. There's going to be one member who is no longer going to be able to serve on the board. His term ends in June. As a result, we did a solicitation to the community. We got back some interest, which we do appreciate. The folks who are here tonight have expressed interest. I think the one part is to revise the charge. Currently, it's only seven members. For the purposes of ensuring a quorum, it was reduced from nine members in February to seven. So I think the idea would be to keep seven members, but to consider one of the members an alternate and one of the members a full member. This is largely not a substantial matter, because it's really to ensure a quorum. That's the biggest thing. With eight, the quorum requirement's different. If someone is appointed an alternate member, they would have the same opportunities as the full members to offer feedback and assist the board. So it's really a technical issue just to be able to maintain a quorum. So the recommendation is to keep it at seven. We do have the members, the parties of interest here. They did send information earlier, which I distributed by email. I have a paper copy if you need it.
I didn't get that. Did you get the information?
No.
No?
I sent it out at 126... 111 for one of the parties, and 2323.
Never arrived.
Well, the folks who are here, they can speak on their own behalf.
It's no big deal.
I do have the information on paper if you'd like to look at it separately.
Well, I think maybe we can just let them speak for themselves.
So having said that, I'll pass it back to you, Mr. Chair, and these two folks here who have expressed interest in the Master Plan Steering Committee.
Okay. The only thing I just want to comment on, and it is, at least in this situation, I think it's kind of insignificant. If we have all eight people there, the alternate member would not be a voting member.
Correct.
That's correct, but that probably would still offer feedback and participate in everything else.
Be a full participant. And why I'm saying that it's kind of insignificant, I think the only vote thus far, and we've been meeting for how long?
Since January of last year.
Yeah. I think the only vote we have taken is to adjourn. So, you know, it's not a question of, we discuss something, and then we take a vote. We discuss something, take a vote. We're just, we're not operating that way. So, you know, it is, it's just, you know, discussion, and whether a person would be considered a full member or the alternate member, other than you can't participate and when will you adjourn?
You're saying that as a chair of the Master Plan Steering Committee.
Yeah, yeah. It's, as far as I'm concerned, he would... The alternate is still a full member, except for that one little thing. So with that, I'm going to be a little chauvinistic. I'm going to say ladies first. Lynn, you want to speak a little bit?
My name is Lynn Turracotta. I live at 18 Davis Street. I grew up in Rutland, moved away when I first got married, and I've been back for the past 22 years, still living in the same house I grew up in, the house in 1759. I remember Historical Commission and the Historical Society, and I'm also a lawyer. And the reason I'd be interested in the Master Plan Steering Committee is I'd like to bring a historical perspective to it. I'd like to see that the old houses, the old buildings in town be preserved, and not just knock down whenever somebody decides to build something else. My house, I've been restoring it now, my husband and I, for 20 years, and when he died, it's now all on me. It was built by a man that answered Paul Revere's call. He was one of the alam men. His name was Jason Reed. And he marched to Cambridge on April 19th, 1775, to back up the Continental, what would become the Continental Army. There was a group of about a dozen Rutland residents who did that, and he was one of them. He ran the house as a tavern for... He and his family for about 100 years. It was a tavern, and then it became a private home after that. Another interest that I have is open space. My house started out as a farm. It was over 100 acres. The state took half of it as watershed. They called it colon property at the time. So we still have a substantial amount of land there. I'd like to see Rutland maintain open space rather than develop everything, because I think one of the reasons people live in Rutland is it's a rural community, and it has a lot of open space. It has a lot of green and scenic areas, and I'd like to see that maintained, and that's what my interest in the community is.
I guess, I'm just going to note that Lynn is also a member of the Ad Hoc Bylaw Committee. We have been meeting for forever.
Three and a half years every week.
Yes.
Every week.
Every week, and I'll just say, you know, if you want to talk about stick-to-itiveness, you know, it's there. So...
Oh, my gosh. I apologize for saying that about a lawyer.
Yeah.
At the Ad Hoc Committee meeting.
Oh, well, okay. And, once again, I'm horrible at names.
Same. My name is John Wambach.
Okay, John.
Director of Operations for an HR tech, technology company, manage project management, general company operations, process improvements, supplier relations. Manage a pretty large budget and a very large team, so I know how to, in a matrix organization, get things done and collaborate with people. Aside from that, I'm also the president of the Board of Directors of Smith Pond LLC, which is a 40-acre parcel of land in West Tannic, Worcester. Hundred-year-old organization that was formed by a few locals, and it's grown over the course of the years, and came in about 15 years ago. And they jumped in and respect the, like, respect all the hard work of the people from the past and the history with the place, but embraced that and moved it to like a new, to a place that it hasn't been before, and like quickly got voted on as president of the Board of Directors. So I'm really proud of, really proud of that. Incidentally, how it relates to Rutland, I mean, I've only been in Rutland eight months, so... Grew up and lived in Worcester my whole life. My wife and I had like a really strong passion for Rutland. Wanted our son in Wachusett, a regional. We had the opportunity to make the move and bring my mom with me. We live at 183 Campbell Street, which is on the corner of Campbell and Glenwood, as I'm sure you guys, you guys know. I've always loved this town and am not a type of person that wants to move here and just like be a passive bystander. I want to like do something and do some good for the, for the community. And in the same way with, like, with Smith Pond, I think that there's, I mean, I took the master, I took the first survey while, and I didn't even live here yet, and I think it's really important to recognize all the sacrifice and hard work of people that made this town what it is, and then work with this master plan to protect the integrity of the town, celebrate the reasons why our people are moving here, but like measure that growth with a respect for the past and all the hard work that's gone into making this town, in my opinion, pretty awesome. I'm sure you guys share that view, because you were here as well. That's me. I appreciate it.
Through the chair, Tamika.
Yes.
Are you sure this gentleman isn't supposed to be running for town administrator?
We have other board and committee vacancies.
This question for you. Is this off of Tori Fockling?
Yeah, yeah, correct.
Awesome place. I can remember going out there about that many years back.
Yeah.
For get-togethers.
It's a great, it's a really cool space.
Yeah.
Makes you feel like you're in New Hampshire or Maine, but you're in, you know, you're in West Tannic. It's, it's pretty cool. I lived right off of it, and that's how I got involved there, but hanging on to my presidency while they let me, even though I don't live in town anymore.
Any questions, comments?
I do have a question to clarify Dick's and Tamika's comments. These folks are running for my office?
Master Plan Steering Committee.
Yes.
I'm sorry, say it again.
The Master Plan Steering Committee.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much.
Well, I'm going to ask a very unfair question. Which one of you would be happy to be the alternate member?
I'm happy, I'm happy to participate in any way for this town, so, I mean, I'd be fine being the alternate member. I think I have a lot to learn, you know, about how the town works and whatnot, so I wouldn't stand in the way if there's like, you know, a passion for like being the main committee member.
Like I say, you know, the difference is...
If, I do have one question, if you don't mind. If the alternate can't vote when the group adjourns, does he or she have to stay there forever?
Definitely.
Yes.
Until the next meeting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You may be thrown for the boards.
Of course.
We may find another subcommittee.
They don't mention that we nail your feet to the floor.
Just the beer gets longer and longer. The COVID beer just keeps growing longer.
Well, I'll accept a...
Motion to accept.
Motion to accept, and I guess we'll say Mr. Turracotta is the new member and Mr. Wamba is the alternate.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Is there any discussion?
I think we have two very qualified candidates here.
I'm seeing some real enthusiasm, which is a good thing.
Yeah.
This, this master plan, it's, it is just, it's so encompassing. You know, basically, it's going into everything, anything about the entire town, you know, all the way from, yes, historic, to open space, to government, to roads, to everything. And hopefully, it's going to come up with not just a vision for what the town is going to be, but a roadmap for the town to follow, and that it will be good enough that the town does follow it. Our previous master plan was kind of eh, and I'm hoping that this one is going to be a whole lot better.
Although I have to say that the master plan back in 2000 was well-attended.
It was well-attended, and actually, when you look back on it, a lot of the stuff that was in there, we accomplished.
Yes.
So, you know, but just the same. Anyway, anything further?
It's too bad for Colonel, I imagine they're going to get the information when they go to them, but what we had the other night was in our packet.
Yeah, yeah, the public information.
Would have been nice to give them the information to...
I'm trying to put together a packet of information for you folks regarding where the group stands now, what the next steps are. Before we forget, so thank you for your interest in this. You'll need to just see the town clerk to be sworn in. I'll defer a transmittal tomorrow that you folks have read. And that the next meeting of the Master Plan Steering Committee is on Wednesday, the 29th. I'll send more details on that as well.
Yeah. So any further discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations, or condolences, whichever the case may be.
Can I just say one thing?
Yeah.
I've been living on Glenwood Row for 56 years. It was a big change. Beautiful town back then. It was only like 3,000 people here. Now...
9,000.
Explosion, you know, old place.
9,600.
Well...
It'd be good. I'd like to see new blood in this, so thank you for joining.
Anyway.
But don't forget my wildlife quarter.
Yeah.
Where you wanted to go. I hope it's to take up my land and leave it open.
It's right, it's right in front of my house. I can see the Boston, and boy, that's all I want to see, is leave Boston down there and have nothing but open, open space. Over to Randy Jordan's, nothing digested.
So Marilyn, if you wish to leave and get back to the comfort of your home?
My rocking chair?
Yeah.
Word of advice, if you're going to fall, don't land on your head. I did have a comment on the, uh, the bylaw subcommittee before I go. I've been having problems just seeing your information on the chairman, and I think that there's a lot of misconceptions in town on what that meeting is supposed to be like. And I've come up with a couple of ideas on that one, is to... My first inclination was to present a very stern lecture on the rules, Robert's Rules of Meetings, and I have since toned that down a little bit to some handouts and explanations that it's... That the, we've had a lot of people come to the meeting, you know, from the community, and I don't think they have a concept of how a committee works, you know, that the committee members discuss what's on the agenda, and that, you know, we have to stick with that agenda, which has been one of the issues. But anyway, to put that aside, Bonnie and I have been, Bonnie Bessie and I have been working on the minutes. She offered to do them, but it turned out she'd never done them before, so we've been working together to get a standard format for the minutes, and that got kind of put by the wayside. So those are the comments that I... Oh, and also, we did finish the, I didn't, I was supposed to give it to you, and it's still in my book, my bag, for the, what was the name of that?
Village Center.
Yeah, the Village Center. We did finish that item, so... And in my own mind, just as I slide, I'm thinking that the next two agenda items, one being home occupation and the other being the zoning, seem to be more and more tied in together to me. So any thoughts that the committee has on that would be interesting. Did you get a chance to look at any of the home occupations?
I did a quick search and found almost nothing.
Yeah.
Okay, however, and I'm going to blame Dave. I did ask Dave to go to CMRPC and see if he could get a list of towns from them...
Oh, that's a good idea.
That do have significant home occupation bylaws, and I'll go, and I'll take it from there. I'll go to those town websites.
Right, good idea.
Just randomly hunting. I, you know, I did like five or six towns, and nobody had anything significant.
That's interesting.
So...
We will be at the forefront.
I don't think you heard back from CMRPC yet.
Not yet. I've been working on things that have taken up my time and attention here. But when's the next meeting?
The next meeting is next Tuesday.
That's what I thought, next Tuesday.
I've learned that facial fractures, fractures take like six weeks to heal, so I'm a little bit questionable on whether or not I'm be there. Or it may be a short meeting.
I plan on being there. I can help you on the minutes in terms of the big picture. And we have access to a computer and the internet, so if we don't have a list put together at that time, I think it would be an appropriate topic to just be all together and just, I could have some preliminary list and just have a look around various towns and see what is out there.
And we could even, I think this was the suggestion, even at a last meeting, that we can take the existing major home occupation bylaw and the one that was proposed, the modification that was proposed, and just kind of look at them side by side, see if there's anything in that modification...
Yeah, exactly.
That we agree with or think might be...
Yeah, yes.
That was my plan for the last meeting, and it just didn't get there.
Yeah.
But I am bringing my gavel to the next one.
And I think, for what I...
Get a bigger one.
Yeah, I may have to get a bigger one.
I think from how I understand the bylaw subcommittee works, which may not be apparent to the general public, is that the process is not the same every single time when the group works on a bylaw change. In this particular instance, the town meeting has referred those changes from the citizens' petitions back to the bylaw subcommittee specifically. So ordinarily, what the expectation is, is that the bylaw subcommittee is charged with coming up with a work product, something which is the result of a survey of other towns', home occupation bylaws', best practices, which we will be getting for you from the Regional Planning Commission. You put that together, and then the board does its job with the first cut.
Right.
And then you open it up to public comments systematically across the town, not just people who may show up, but generally speaking, you may have a comment period. Then you get comments. You refine those comments and put it back into the bylaw.
Right. Right.
And then you keep going from there. So maybe the process needs to be just described for the folks who will be attending the meeting, which I can help you with that next Tuesday.
Okay. Well, the issue is that nobody wants to stick to an agenda. They, they come in with their own agendas, most of which have, all of which pretty much have no connection to what we're discussing and are not part of any business of the planning board. So I think that, and they also act as participants in the meeting. So if Norm made a comment, then the members of the, I call it the peanut gallery, going back to Howdy Doody when I was a kid. The members of the peanut gallery will bring up another point or, you know, we hardly ever get to speak because they're busy talking. And I understand that as chairman is my responsibility, and I think I'm very capable of doing it, but I just was rather stunned that I've never seen anything quite like that. But I really appreciate your feedback, and I appreciate, you know, anything that, that you can do to help.
Sure. I think you have a very good point in terms of the process, the agenda, the process. You just cycle through and know that this is going to be a process that takes some period of time. So, yes, that's, yeah. I'll get an agenda out for the twenty-first.
Oh, that would be great.
Change is messy, you know? Change is messy, and getting a group to, to change behavior is like art in itself. But I think you just have to demonstrate what good, I mean, to Dave's point, what good process looks like. And then whether it's old business, you know, old business, new business, and then thirty minutes for, for participation and just keep it really tight.
Right.
You know? And then sooner or later, like...
I definitely...
The message comes across.
I definitely agree with that, but I just think there needs to be a specific education process. If, if we didn't have participants, this particular group has worked together for five or six years? I don't know, quite a long time.
More than that.
It's the participants that are making it. But, you know, visibility, keeping the transparent, making it, everybody feel like they have visibility and transparency.
Absolutely. I agree with you.
Is important. So that's good that you're having participation. That's pretty amazing.
It is. And it's basically the first time that this particular board has had a lot of participation. It's that they don't understand the process of the board, that they are really not active participants. So...
Yeah.
And then, and also that we do have an agenda that we are following, and we're not discussing traffic on Glenwood Road.
Right, right. Yeah.
So, thank you for your input.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I don't want to like...
No, that's fine.
It's, if there's like a mission statement or like you have a, definitely have the right point of view, you start, you just start every meeting like really quickly, like here's the, here's how we're going to run things. And then if they, if they have a thing about traffic, right, maybe there's like a time and place, submit that to be added to the, added to the agenda. Like you can't just, you can't just like speak up, you know?
Yeah, the, right, you can't speak up. And it's also not the process really of the, how the planning board works in the town, you know, in the town. But I appreciate your input. Okay, anything else?
I don't think there's anything else we really have to do tonight.
No, there's no comments for any of the active subdivisions.
Right.
The master plan update really was just a, a quick update, which we can hold till next time. I will say that the next meeting is on the twenty-ninth of June. There was a master plan forum last week. That event was broadcast live, and it also broadcast for, to be viewed on YouTube as well. There's a website that exists. If people are interested in leaving comments, who saw the video of the meeting, they can go to the website, and there's access to a form to fill out for any comments that people may have. We'll make people aware of that more generally through the town's website and social media to try to gather comments. And we, the phase three grant application went out. We're expecting it to be squashed by November. That'll be the last couple of chapters. There are several, a couple of chapters that are in a draft form that will look for comments far from the group. We have goals and objectives worked out substantially for most of the chapters. That's it in a nutshell for the master plan update.
So, well, is there any other business to come before the board?
I hear none. Therefore, I make a motion to return.
Aye, second motion.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Time is?
Seven thirty-five.